I'm going to call this meeting to order. We can begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, presentation of awards and proclamations, and we don't have any this evening. So moving on to Agenda Item C, public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. If anybody in the public want to come forward. I will remind everyone listening at home that our phone lines are open. Our phone number to call is 860-665-8736. And we do have a member of the public stepping forward. You can please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Emerald Zico, and the address is 64 Dover Road in Newington, Connecticut. Thank you. The reason why we're here today is we're running into an issue with my daughter. She's in first grade this year, and because we're close to the school, she's not able to get the bus. She can't get into the bus, even though one of the buses goes by our house. She's only six, and I'm very concerned for her to walk to school. Half of the way for her to get to the school, there is no sidewalk, and knowing in wintertime how the street gets, and it's kind of we are the last ones to be pouted, I definitely don't feel safe letting her walk to school by herself. The only cross-border we have for her is right in front of Anna Reynolds School. By the time she gets to the school, she has to cross the street twice. And I really don't feel comfortable with her going to school by herself or walking to school. So that's why we're here today. My husband and I both work. There is no way for us to drive her to school in the morning.
I'm going to thank you for your comments, and if you did end up having some kind of hearing with the schools over this, we shouldn't be hearing you right now because we'd be acting as the decision-making body for that. So I'm going to have to say thank you and cut you off. I'm really sorry about that. Can you tell her what she should do?
Yeah.
I mean, I am really disappointed that that's the answer that I get. I mean...
We legally can't listen to the details unless you request a hearing before the Board through the process.
I did request a hearing, and because I didn't get a response. I did get a response, but I was just trying to move forward and find a way that we can be helped.
Right, so the next thing is to request through my office a hearing with the Board of Education.
Okay, I wasn't sure that I had to do that, but thank you.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak or call in? 860-665-8736. Yes, Mr. Sylvia.
Does she understand the process that she needs to follow?
We will send it out to you in the mail tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, seeing no other members of the public coming forward, we'll move on to Agenda Item D, Consent Agenda for the Approval of Our Minutes. Mr. Visella is not here, so could I have Mr. Tufelt go ahead with that? Let's see. Somebody make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is written?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the minutes May 24, 2017, July 11, 2017, August 21, 2017, and September 13, 2017.
Second.
All in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. Item number E on the agenda, old business, we have none, so moving forward to new business. We have a report, new business number one on the capital improvement projects. Mr. Tufelt, you are up.
The Faculty's Committee, Facilities Committee, excuse me, met on September 13 for review of the needs of the district and the Board's priorities and the facilities and support for 21st Century of Learning. Bear with me a moment.
Sure. Mr. Jack Moltz, is there anything you want to add to this?
If you'd like to, yes.
Okay, the meeting on the 13th of September was preliminary in nature, it was to review the proposals and craft a proposal for the Board, CIP account proposal, as well as the town CIP account proposal that will ultimately be vetted as part of the overall town budget process in the winter and spring next year. On page five of the document is the proposal for the upcoming year plus four out-years on the Public School CIP Fund. This is the fund where we have $125,000 mandatory appropriation from the town. We receive revenues that accrue to this account as a result of tuition activity, building rentals, and investment income. At the current status of the account, we have slightly over $500,000 of undesignated funds within this particular account. So you can see that the project request for fiscal year 18, 19, total $915,000 compared to a revenue item of $400,000. This will keep the account in balance, you know, since we have $515,000 to designate plus $400,000 in new revenues, we will, you know, our income will equal our proposed expenses. And then in the out-years, we have $400,000 in and $400,000 out. The revenue is always susceptible to both timing issues as far as when organizations pass. We do get a substantial reimbursement from the City of Hartford for the Open Choice Program for special ed expenditures that are incurred, but if that doesn't come in by June 30, you know, one year's number is low while the other number is artificially inflated. So what we try to do with, this is really the smaller of the two capital improvement projects where we typically try to use this to backstop a number of quasi-maintenance, renovation efforts around the district, replacing carpeting, changing up furniture, painting, window work, door work, all of the things that by themselves are not really a large enough project to go through a full public bidding arrangement, but it supplies a very necessary niche of activity to keep our buildings in good shape. So you can see from the scope of the different projects that are here, we really try to cut across all of the potential needs of the Board of Ed to, you know, be able to address issues as they come up year to year. Okay? Anybody have any questions on this page before?
Can you explain that $515,000 again?
Correct. You were to look at the reconciliation of the count as of June 30. The undesignated balance in the account is $515,300, give or take a couple dollars. Without designating money in the account to specific projects, it's not accessible to the Board to act on. So by not re-appropriating it or requesting that it's re-appropriated to specific needs for ourselves, we basically bottle that money up and prevent ourselves from accessing it. It has to be done as part of the overall budget process every year. I don't get to add items without specific council action until after January 1 of any one year. So this is anticipating what our needs will be, anticipating what our revenues will be for the upcoming year.
So the $515,000 came from last year?
Yes.
And we're carrying it?
And I believe some even from the year before that because of the timing when you, as you remember, we're putting in a budget request in November, December timeframe, we won't know until six, seven months later how a year is unfolding, and then we're catching up either the following year or even two years out at times, depending on what happens.
Thank you.
Does this end the underground storage tanks for the district?
No, this was just Phase One. We did Anna Reynolds and Ruth Chaffey. We still have the high school, Elizabeth Green, John Patterson, and Martin Kellogg to do.
So this $100,000 is just for?
Right, it's part of it. Part of it, right. The first two we did, cost is somewhere in the vicinity of $45,000. You know, we changed the strategy from replacement to just removal, you know, based on the economic conditions today, there really wasn't economic justification to put a new tank back in the ground for another $40,000, $50,000 when the cost to just buy natural gas in the open market is so much more favorable. You know, that's an issue we'll address down the road if necessary.
So to finish all of them, it will require additional money?
Yes.
In future years, we just?
All right, I think we have about $20,000 left on last year's appropriation, plus $120,000. This will cover at least three quarters of where we need to go.
Okay, and then in the future, we would expect to see maybe next year, if there's a carryover from this year, that would be something added on?
Yes, I think our EPA mandatory timeline on this takes us two years out from now into 2021, and then we'll be done.
Okay.
Tank removal.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. So we have more tanks to address, but we haven't forecasted those expenditures into future years?
Yeah, well, $100,000 for starters, and that'll take us through the next round of taking the tanks out of the ground. Then we'll reassess what the additional money is to finish the project. Okay, this will actually be over minimum three years, possibly four.
But I heard you say 2021, we might have to do a few more tanks.
Because that'll be the end of it. The last ones will come out of the ground in 2021.
Right, so we don't need any money reserved for it by then?
This will cover part of it. As I said, we have about $20,000 left from the first appropriation with $100,000. This probably will cover paying for three out of the four tanks that are left, and then if there is, if we can get all four done, that's fine, but we're only...
It's safe to say that next year's plan would have the remainder of it once we get an idea.
Thank you.
Ms. Guy, and you have a question?
No, I think just a clarification that when we look at this page, there's money in it for this coming for next year, but then not money going forward. I think that's the confusion.
Correct, right. I would not want to commit a major financial outlay to it where it would be minimal, you know, probably under $20,000 to finish.
Okay.
And we'll just, when we're back to the table next year for this, I'll have a much clearer idea of where we are at that point. Do you give a good projection?
Any other questions?
Okay.
Mr. Tufelt?
And then on the project title for the 2018, 2023 CIP, the priorities were adjusted, starting with one and working all the way up through nine.
On page six?
And also the, on page six, and the monies have been adjusted across the funding for these projects.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, yes, Mr. Sylvia?
This brings me back to a discussion we had a few months back, or maybe more than a few months, which was the feasibility study, to really know how much work we really need to do on all of our facilities. You know, I know that this is an educated swag of what we anticipate we need to spend, but I'm wondering if it's the right time for us to get the feasibility study so we have a real clear picture and can communicate that out to the community that beyond Anna Reynolds, we're going to need X amount more for this, 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 and this, and I mean, have a professional engineer under that feasibility study that you shared with us. I think it's still a great idea to try to get accomplished.
It's a great idea. Well, I think what we talked about at the Facilities Committee meeting was involving the entire town so that you can get an idea of what the needs were across the town. Because of the cost of it, it would need to go through the town bidding process, and it would need to be done through the town. So I would recommend, if the Board wishes, to get together with the town folks or the council and see if you want to develop a feasibility study for the town buildings. That would be best.
Can I add something to that? One of the other aspects that is part of the Board purview is deciding on what initiatives they want to pursue. A feasibility study of existing buildings, existing conditions, really only deal with repair, renovation, and extension of useful life of the facility. Some of the items that you have on the books here are for community-wide preschool capabilities. Now, that would entail in all likelihood either a major addition on one of our properties or acquiring another property to get there. And these are the things that really need to go through a more formal Board vetting as far as where does the Board want to go and design a long-term plan before we actually try to react to it and create a response. An engineer or an architect's ability to deal with that will only be based on what we tell them we are looking for for the future.
You won't get an argument from me on that one, Lou. I mean, I was referencing the feasibility study on our existing assets. What do we have to really repair? We all know Anna Reynolds needs to be addressed, and we're pushing for the Building Committee on that, but I'd really like to have a five-year vision of the types of other restorations that we need to potentially bond for if we have to really go and fix the roofs, if we really have to go get those air conditioners done, if we have to really do some road repairs and such on our existing assets.
I think your plan does go out five years, the one you have there. That should go out five years.
Yes.
But these numbers are a swag, right? I mean...
Based on market value?
Yeah, they're more than a swag, you know. For any construction-related work, because of prevailing wage laws, the code demands that the state places on any community build a school, best case, you're going to get $350 a square foot. You know, for a more expensive or sophisticated project, you'll move up into a $400 square foot range. It's really just a matter of targeting the size. So think of an illustration of a preschool arrangement where you're going to decide, I want to have 20 classrooms available to handle, you know, a full community preschool center. And you know a classroom with related spaces that goes with it for lavatories, offices, you know, pull-out centers, the corridor space, the main office. You would be going 1,250 square foot per classroom, like in a module. So just extrapolating that, you know you're going to need a building with $25,000 square foot range to address that need. And at $400 a square foot, you're talking close to $1 million for the, there's going to be $10 million for the build out of that. That's there. You know, certainly if you're in a secondary market and trying to retrofit a facility, you know, you have a whole different set of cost structures and issues to deal with. You know, if you're acquiring a facility, you do have to get state permission that they'll allow you to put it on the roster of accepted school building because you will be able to meet code, you're making a commitment to do that, rather than acquiring a facility that is, you know, substandard from the state's code perspective and trying to just make do. So there's a lot of checks and balances in the system that have to be considered in designing the overall plan of where the Board would like to forecast a vision for the community for the future.
As long as you brought up preschool, the plans have to be submitted to the state by Pamela. When do we have to have our plans submitted to the state, 2021 or 2019?
They have to be open by 2022 and planned by 2019.
Okay, so we have to have a plan by 2019, and we have to be open by 2022.
More details for everyone?
Yes.
Well, right, they're going to give us the requirements in 2019.
Right, and we're supposed to be open by 2022, which means you...
I have to finalize.
Right, so you have your proposal that would call for consolidated preschool in 2020? I gave you my plan, so I don't know. I can't remember what year it was. 7.6.
Yeah, we have the allocation for discussion here for 19 and 20.
20, okay.
So, but again, these are all fluid as far as where the community wants to take it. If it's, we don't want this, but we want something else, or we want this much bigger, much different, added on to an existing facility, if we have the land space available to build out additionally on a property. Those are all considerations that go into this. So, you know, in the work we've done with architects in the past, many times you commission an architect to do the visionary piece of this, to come up with conceptual, you know, two-line drawings of what the expectation is, what the approximate sizes will be, and trying to fit it into the community network of possible solutions, you know, where we can put it. So a lot of times the engineers are really just reacting from once they're provided a set of construction documents or a specific set of renovation requests to act on, and that really is, it's going to be out of context. I won't necessarily provide you the answer you're looking for, I think.
Thank you very much, Ken. Are we ready to move on now?
Yes, thank you. I just want to bring up one more point. If you can, I can turn your attention to page six. We have a little bit of an issue in that if you look at the bus replacement program, there's $220,000 that was adopted by the council. We are in a position now where our third 71-passenger school bus that is 10 years of age or more requires about a $14,000 repair. I don't see the financial sense in doing that. However, the town has not released the funding for the school buses, so that is still sitting in the capital fund, and we're not able to use it. So I just want you to be aware that we are three buses down as of today.
Is this a timing issue?
Well, we are running out of buses.
So maybe I didn't pose the question correctly. The CIP funds are there from the town?
Yes.
But they just haven't been released to us?
Yes.
So that we can write a check for the bus?
Yes, or order the bus.
So to me, it sounds like a timing issue.
Can you clarify why?
Well, they normally are available July 1. They have not been released yet. There's been a spending freeze for the Board anyway, for capital items.
Correct, we cannot write a contract against those dollars. You know, the town has basically held off on releasing our CIP number. I can't speak for the town side because I haven't looked at theirs item by item. You know, without speculating about what their motives are, I would suspect they're trying to keep their options open for what they would do if you get very bad news from the state on whatever budget is ultimately...
Okay, so speculation, I could probably understand that kind of speculation, that they're sort of waiting for what is the budget decisions from the state, possibly?
That's my personal suspicions, but I don't have any medical evidence to...
Well, right, right.
And it's not that I've never asked on it.
Okay, okay.
Unfortunately, that doesn't change our situation.
No, doesn't.
But have you, I'm sorry, have you asked why?
No, I didn't on that, so...
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, well, we were told everything's, you know, frozen, you know? As far as, you know, the basic, we're waiting on the state budget. I assume nothing has changed in the last two months to change their opinion of why it's on hold.
So this is a town manager decision?
I, somewhere from the town side. I'm not sure if it was a town council action.
Were town management-oriented?
Yes, it would be somewhere on the town government side the decision emanated from.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if it was the council action that the town managers...
I don't recall any council action or discussion on this.
Right, it could be just an informal, just sit tight for a while, so...
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Schellman? Just for clarification purpose, because this comes up whenever we bond out, have a possible bonding five years out, says Patterson and Kellogg in 2022, 2023. My assumption is that those are in that year because we go five years out, and that's the fifth year, but those aren't things that have to be done in 2022 and 2023.
No, we want to keep them on the radar, so that's why they're in that fifth column. And you'll see that Patterson is down to $10 million because we have been going through that building. We've finished the air conditioning, we are working on the heating now, so that number keeps coming down, and we're hoping to get it down even further than that. So when we do have to renovate what's left, it will be a graphically reduced amount. Same thing with Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Schellman. Okay, moving on to item number three, a new business. No, item number two, a new business, healthy food certification. Who wants to discuss that?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Everybody loves me tonight, so... Okay, if you can recall back in the spring, there's the traditional annual Board action for renewing our participation in the healthy food certification. At the time that motion was made, it was silent about allowing the, what's the exact language here? You know, allowing exemptions from the standards. This allows us flexibility of what we do at concession stands, like up at the football fieldhouse and other places. Since the original motion was silent, we are up on a program review this year, and we felt it was important to have absolute clarity about that because it could create a technical violation if we don't get things aligned properly. So this is just a housekeeping motion at this point, it has absolutely no effect on anything.
Right, it's pretty self-explanatory. So if someone could read the motion? Thank you, Mr. Schellman.
Move the Board of Education provide exemptions from the healthy food certification program in the following manner. Exemption for food items, the Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on a weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store.
Can I have a second? Sharon? All those in favor?
Discussion, please?
Okay, discussion.
Thank you. What about holidays?
Well...
I can't hear you, I'm sorry, Robert.
We have a holiday once in a while, it's Thanksgiving Day game. If it's on Thanksgiving morning, that would be a holiday.
Okay, so maybe we should amend the motion to say on a weekend or holiday?
I would be fine with that.
Sure.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Okay, could someone move to amend the motion?
Make a motion to amend the motion.
Okay.
Include a holiday instead of weekend?
Right, to say, say on a weekend or holiday, to add that word.
Okay, I'll second that.
Someone second that? Okay, all in favor of amending the motion per Mr. Tufelt's explanation right there? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, now, okay, so we've voted to amend the motion that has passed. Any discussion on that? Okay, so now we're going to vote on, yes?
I hate to bring any difficulties to the situation, but, so I just wonder by saying a holiday, it might not designate whether it is a school day or not because we are, let's say Veterans Day, having school. So as such, might it be better to say regular school day or a non-school day opposed to holiday? Just a thought, I just don't want you all to vote on something that might put us in another precarious situation.
Anybody have any comments to make towards that?
So why do they even put the word "school" in? Just say on a day.
No, it's at the end of a regular school day or a non-school day. So it can't be during school hours.
So instead of saying weekend at all, just have it say the end of a regular school day or on a non-school day?
Oh, that would be clean. I would agree with that.
Okay, so we have to...
We are.
I know, I think that makes.
I, I move to amend the motion at the end of number one to say regular school day or on a non-school day.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so do, I think we have to vote down the other one, right?
No, we're, we're good.
Okay, all right, so let's, we've discussed it. All those in favor of the amended motion as Mr. Schellman just stated? Everybody in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, so could we just get clarification? So it's going to say the sale's in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regu, of the regular school day or on a non-school day? That's what we just passed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business number three, budget guidelines. Dr. Collins? Go ahead.
Move the Board of Education approve the budget guidelines for the 2018-2019 school year as reviewed on September thirteenth, 2017.
Second. Now time for discussion.
Okay, so we have the budget guidelines, I just want to, they are very similar as in past years. I do want to remind everyone that we are beginning the budget process about 1.8 million dollars in deficit. That is that we used borrowed money to operate and to fund this year's salaries. So we are starting at 1.8 million dollars below zero. I just want to make everybody aware of that. So when the number comes in far higher than it, we usually do, that everybody remembers why. It was the decision that was made to fund salaries
I get that.
through borrowed money. So that, that's where we begin. We have several mandates that have not stopped, that will need to be done. And we have some things that have, have obviously been deferred. So we are, we are looking at a, what was likely to be a very high budget number at a time when the governor may be pulling the rug out from underneath the community with regard to state funding. So I just want to make everybody aware of that, so when that number comes in, that there isn't a surprise, that we understand why this is happening.
Any further discussion, Mr. Sylvia?
Well, thank you. So Dr. Collins, I have a different perspective on this hole that you just explained, in that we're below zero, all right? We did experience a number of life events over the course of the two years that did provide us with an opportunities to find locations in the prior budgets for us to set aside prior allocated funds, and they did total to 1.8 million dollars. And I know that we've basically carried over the 1.2 million. I don't view it as a hole. I view it as the hard work of the NPS staff has finding opportunities for us to, I'm gonna use the word save, but it's probably not the right word, but to find opportunities within the prior budgets that we could have additional funds available to us to reallocate. Having said that, I will be eager to see what the staff recommends and what you will also support and recommend. But I, I just can't accept the concept that we're in a hole. We have 70 million dollars, and we have to figure out how to leverage those funds to provide the best education we can to our students. So, I'm coming at it from a much different perspective. And so the language of saying that we're in a hole, it, it's just not, it's not meeting my perspective.
We're in a deficit.
We're a deficit. I don't see the deficit.
Why don't we let Mr. Schellman speak?
Thank you.
I, I was just gonna say, I was just looking for any discussion on the actual guidelines, because I think that's what we're voting on and discussing.
I, I think that that isn't in the penum, the penum.
The guidelines don't say that we're working from a hole, and that we're working from a deficit.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Sylvia, any further comments? Can someone read the motion? Oh, we did, okay, all those in favor?
Point that we've had the same priorities, and I, I, they're important priorities, but the order's more or less the same.
They're diff, they're different this year.
They're different, we changed the order.
Yeah, there's guidelines regard, I believe at the end regarding special education outplacements, breakage. Those are the two.
Okay.
Those are quite different.
It's based off of the priorities we set as a board and expanded, right, okay.
Remember, they changed the special, we've always budgeted net amount on the special ed, and they, they changed the rules this year, so we can no longer do that. And also, we have experienced, as Mr. Sylvia said, some life experiences, but it seems that the people we are replacing are at the higher end. So whenever we have somebody like a math teacher or a science teacher who's going out and retiring, we, we know we're not gonna find them at the plans rate. So we want to make sure we budget accordingly, so that we don't get ourselves into a bind. But just those, if it's an elementary teacher, obviously we'll budget at the, the plans rate.
I, I think a lot of the, the, the idea behind this is to be as transparent as possible, and that's why all these guidelines were written that way.
Right, people get confused over when they, they, they don't, they see a certain dollar amount, especially for your special ed, when that amount in there is a net amount. And, because where does that other money come from? So that we're trying to put it all out there.
Thank you. Item number four. We, Mr. Sylvia, you want to read it again?
I'm Mr. Schellman.
Sorry.
Move the Board of Education approve a resolution honoring school cafeteria workers and proclaiming Wednesday, October 11th, 2017 as School Cafeteria Workers' Day.
Seconded by Bob, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Schellman, you want to take the next one?
Move the Board of Education approve the resolution honoring school bus drivers and proclaiming Wednesday, October 11th, 2017 as School Bus Drivers' Day.
Seconded by Emily, any discussion? Mr. Sylvia?
I just, clarities, we're, we're, we're.
We're on item number five in new business.
Right, so I'm reading that October 11th, we're designating that day for the cafeteria workers, and we're also designating that day as honoring the bus drivers.
Yes, and there is the resolution going around if everyone could sign it.
So, okay, just, I, I thought we would at least pick another day, but okay. Same day, two groups.
Any further discussion? Let's vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item number six. Who wants to read the motion? Meeting cancellation? Emily?
Move the Board of Education cancel the regular meeting scheduled for Wednesday, October 25th, 2017.
Second, Mr. Schellman, discussion?
Why?
Well, I think it's, that's good, we should say what it's for, the, the purpose is to, to honor our Teacher of the Year on that night. That's what it's for.
So, should we reschedule the October 25th to another night?
I think we traditionally use that night to honor the Teacher of the Year, and we schedule, we cancel the meeting every, every year.
Oh, all right.
It's just something that we do.
My ignorance, okay, thank you.
All those, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting passes. And then we're on to item number seven, which we don't need to take any action on any further, but Dr. Collins, would you like to explain what happened?
Right, so the, we're actually, this is, we're calling this a nevermind memo. If you remember, at the last board meeting, I said we, we may need to change the calendar. The, because the, the board needs to operate in, in line with the town services. So if the town hall was going to be closed, we would not be able to be open because we need to get our kids to school on the buses, we need to get to feed them at lunch, the secretaries need to answer the phone, and so everybody, we, it's either everybody or nobody. Since then, the town manager and asked me have, have met, and the town manager has reversed, and they will be open on Veterans Day, which means we will be open on Veterans Day. So there is absolutely no change, so there's no action required from the board at this time.
I think it's a good time to also reiterate the plan for that day at school.
Right, one of the things I asked the teachers to do, since we are going to be here, is very often, I shouldn't say all, but some of our kids don't necessarily understand why they have the day off. And it's a very important day, and we want to make sure that the time is spent, since we will be in school, to honor those men and women who have, who have served our country, and some have paid the ultimate sacrifice. So they will be doing a variety of activities throughout the day, depending on the school and the classroom. Obviously, we're not gonna police that, but, but I know our teachers, and I know that they will do right by our veterans.
Mr. Schellman?
I know we've talked about it before, and I've, I've had a few conversations with the folks of the American Legion, that there are at least a handful, if not quite a few more vets in our own community that would love the opportunity to be able to come in as guest speakers in some of the classrooms for a limited time. I know they, they were, they were actually very excited when I talked to them about potentially being open in the future on Veterans Day, because they'd love a chance to connect with the kids, and, and they have some great activities that they, they do also, that I think that we've talked about, the oratorical contest that's free for our kids but can result in scholarships. So it's a good time for them to plug that, for kids to get scholarships, and, and for them to be able to talk about their actual service, to bring a, a real face to it. So I, I hope that we do reach out to, to them and, and make that happen.
We've got Victory Gardens right in the back of the high school, so we've got multiple opportunities, we really do.
Yeah, so I, I'd love to hear more about our plans, um, once they, once it gets a little closer to it.
This is the kind of thing where I don't mind them taking the day and actually doing other things besides what they actually do.
Now, if some of the veterans do want to come in, who, whom should they contact?
The teachers or individual schools will be handling that by school. So I'll send something out to the principals and let them know. You know, get in touch with them.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we're moving on to agenda item G, Superintendent of Schools' report.
Okay, now we'll be brief. This is our first opportunity really to look at the enrollment, to see where we are. There is one, I don't know if yours has been corrected, but the outplace students, the projected was 49, it should say 51. If yours does not say 51, please change that. The magnet schools, we were projecting at 172, they're 201. The preschool was projected at 57, or 61. And to be at 61 in September is enormous, because we, we usually have room throughout the year as, as students turn three or four to, to bring them in. But we are at past capacity in September, that's unbelievable. So to say that we don't, we need a preschool is an intense understatement. But we are obviously over, by this count, by 81 or 82 students above projected. The classrooms are full.
So I know that, I mean, 61 kids in preschool, that is full. And as children turn three and need services, how do we accommodate that?
Classes get bigger.
And we'll have to hire more tutors in the classroom?
No, we just get bigger.
But aren't there ratio numbers that have to be maintained?
We try, but we just don't have the staff.
It's strive-to language?
Unless you have a PPT and an IEP that says one-on-one or something.
Well, these students are primarily special needs students that are in our preschools.
So Mr. Sylvia is questioning that. So, when you're do, when you're providing programming for special education's preschool children, the strive-to language is that they want 50, 50 peers, 50, 50 peers, peers and specialized children. And it, it's vital for us to keep as close to, possible to that. However, because they're aware that issues like this happen in schools, all in school towns, the language is strive-to language. So yes, we are out of compliance when we go above that with the strive-to language. So we're, it's really, we really should be striving to keep a 50/50 ratio.
I do want to draw.
I'm talking about teachers, though, in the classroom, adults in the classroom.
Right. Yeah, we have no money to, to hire any additional staff.
What's the language on that?
Like the ratio of teachers for students.
Right.
Um, I'd like to draw your attention to the expenditure summary report. Matter of, a little bit of concern for me is the special education line item. If you look, we are in September, and we are 40% expended.
Which, on the revised one, I don't see the, oh, it's on the original one, okay.
The expenditure report, on the last page. Special education, we're at 40% expended. So we keep our eye on that, obviously, but we are cutting it very, very close. So that, that is likely going to be problematic. We've heard other communities, as they, as they, as they trim their budgets, you know, they cut it very close, and if you have events happen in special ed which you have no control over whatsoever, I shouldn't say no control, you do have some, I suppose, but the kids need what they need, and you, and you really, this is not an area where you can be cheap. So, we need to provide for our children, and, and we're just gonna be tight on the money if we are 40% expended in September. Just want to bring that to your attention.
And that's why we wanted to keep that contingency fund healthy.
Yeah, now that's empty.
Any other comments, questions, Mr. Sylvia?
Um, on the carryover funds that we have in the non-lapsing fund and, and such that we moved from last year.
I believe there's a hundred dollars left.
Pardon?
I believe there's a hundred dollars left.
Is that reflected in this report?
No.
No, so we've already paid salaries from the summer?
Well, that's moved over, I don't know if Lou's moved it over yet or not.
Sorry.
It's not finalized yet from a transaction that we have to reconcile with the town, but we're working on it right at this point. But it will utilize the entire balance other than, you know, a small amount, the minimum amount to keep the fund open.
Right, so we're on, where my head's wrapped, where my mind's wrapped around Lou is, is that the 70 million, 389, that was what was approved for us to have.
Correct.
But that does not include the 1.2 million dollars.
That's correct.
So where is the 1.2 million dollars distributed amongst these accounts?
It's an offset in the five big programs as a negative. Because we will pull the money out of those programs and send it to the non-lapsing fund as an expense. So it'll be a credit on the board side, it'll be an expense on the, on non-lapsing fund. So in essence, zero out the non-lapsing fund, and we will receive the benefit of the money coming back to the board through that expenditure transfer.
And when you say the big five, that's English language arts, mathematics, music?
No, not music, uh, reading, social studies, and science.
Uh, includes mathematics?
Yes.
And English?
Yes.
Okay, those are the five?
English, math, reading, science, social studies.
Is it possible for me to ask for a breakout of how you did the credits and debits on those five?
Yeah, it's just 20% of the credit.
You took 20% to each?
Right.
Okay.
Are we all set?
Is there any reports or things that we get on the, on the student activity funds or the Chromebook insurance funds?
The Chromebook account is held by the town. So they have that, that, that account.
The town has that account?
Mm-hmm.
It's not under our jurisdiction or approvals?
Right, well, it's a balance sheet account, and the Board of Ed does not have a balance sheet. So it has to reside on the town side of the operation. So we turn all of the money over that we receive in Chromebook insurance payments. So we turn all of the money over that we receive in Chromebook insurance payments. It goes into the reserve and we draw that down when we buy repair parts or replacement equipment.
Okay, so the town manages the account?
Correct.
All right, and what about the student activity fund?
Those are all independent.
Independent, not managed by who?
The town, there's a treasurer for each of the student activity accounts. That's either signed through the teacher B appendix in the teacher contract or in some of the cases, there are other individuals who have been involved for a number of years that we didn't have an NTA person.
These are independent of the board?
No, these are all reportable back to us through audit, but it's an independent fund.
Is there an opportunity that we could, in the future, have those included in the report so that we can see what the running balance is and the activities that they're spending on?
We got to get that through the town, don't we?
No, we'd have to go back to all the treasurers to get a running report.
Every month.
Right. We typically just get a once-a-year summarization at the end that is what goes up to audit. So that's been the routine practice, but I would just have to request it and create a reporting structure for the various treasurers to compile their information.
Maybe you can explain what goes into that account and what it's used for.
In the student activity account?
Yeah, because it's, yeah.
Yeah, there's probably about, I would say 10 accounts in total. Each of the schools that is under the jurisdiction of the principal has a school-based student activity account. This is used for field trips, other activities that the school does, some minor fundraising gift receipt that they get from various sources in the community. And they expend it in conjunction as enrichment to the curriculum or activities for the kids that are there. At the high school, it's a little more sophisticated. You have a general student activity account which handles the same sort of basics that are there, but there's many more subsets to it, like each of the graduating class has their own line item. They typically create an account for gifting something back to the school based on the money they collect that's there. You have the music fund which stands independent, which is all of the receipts and collateral costs to put on the musical and the dramatic productions during the year. You have the athletics account, which does the same thing, to provide those collateral items for all of the various sports teams at the high school level. Say what else is there?
So this is something that's contained in the audit. So this is done, it's, it'll, it'll show up in the caper every year. And so this isn't something that we can ask from the parents and from, from each individual school every month, it would just be two owners.
It could be, I am not looking at the month, my details, we're looking at the audit integrity of the transactions at this point, so.
Can you explain where they get their money from throughout?
Well, in the basic categories I just described, you know, those funds are taken indirectly by the school. So one of the practices that the district's has had for a number of years is you never know when a bus is not going to be available for a field trip because of other scheduling or crises or things like that. So they collect money of anywhere from a dollar to $5 a trip. And if our bus can cover it, the school will keep that money in their student activity account. For the day that the bus garage says we can't cover it, go hire a bus down to Daco or, I can't think of the other place in Berlin right now that does a lot of this.
New Bern Transportation.
Right, New Bern Transportation.
Remember we're three buses down.
Right, so, and then they will have to pay the full dollar amount out of that. So there's some of those items that are in there. The, the field days for whatever solicitations they're looking for from parents or students for T-shirts or whatever else they're doing, doing for the, yeah, making the activity vibrant for themselves. Sure.
Just, yeah, I just wanted to kind of have you clarify that, because I know every time I write a check for the school, whether it's for field day, whether the kids are doing something in class, they had a, they have somebody come and do a photography program in fifth grade. If they go on a field trip, every check that I write is to the student activity fund.
Right, correct.
So.
Okay, you know better than I do, because you're closer to the action.
And we have a separate music account for music rentals and things like that, each school has.
Right, and music rentals as well, besides the music, for the musical at the high school.
Right, right.
Thank you for the explanation.
Mr. Sylvia?
Um, Dr. Collins, I had one other question under transportation. I know that we had asked previously if we could, that the state required us to run some sort of bus driver report or validation of-
It's done every two weeks.
Every, right, but it was, I thought we agreed that Mr. Avery would put it in the report that it was run?
Okay, Debbie, can you write that down?
He has been reporting it weekly or bi-weekly to us just over a email blast, so it has been getting done.
I believe, I just, I, I just, it's a check, mental checkpoint for me, so we don't get in trouble with the state again.
That's fine.
I get it every two weeks.
Thank you.
Anything further? Moving on to Agenda H, public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. There's no one in the audience, anybody want to call in? Our phone line is open, 860-665-8736. Any takers out there? No takers, so we're going to move on to remarks by board members. Mr. Schulman, would you like to start? Mr. Sam? Mr. Sylvia? This guy on?
Well, yeah. So, oh, is that phone ringing?
Is it ringing?
It was.
Call back.
Oh, please call back. I didn't hear it ring either. 860-665-8736, somebody out there wanted to call?
You can interrupt.
Oh, here we go. Hello, thank you for calling the Board of Ed, please state your name and address.
Hello?
Hi, you're on.
Hi, this is Patty Fuller, 51, Crown Ridge, how are you?
Good, how are you? Thanks for calling.
Thanks, thanks for having a meeting, except that for the most part, you can't hear most of the people speaking tonight. I have my television on 100% and between, I'd say a good portion of everybody is not sitting up to their microphones. It's really disheartening because I can't hear what's going on. And while I couldn't be there tonight in person, I would like to be able to at least hear at home. So I know you've been up all summer, so you haven't had a lot of practice with the microphones, but you need to get up closer so we can hear you.
Okay, thank you so much for calling.
Right.
Okay, this guy on you're up?
Okay. I just want to say, yeah, there we go, I can hear it now. Nice job tonight, Jane, thank you for filling in. And, yeah, I guess in the last couple of weeks, I've just had the opportunity to be, to go to the open house at the high school, very exciting. There was just so many parents there and, again, my son is a freshman, so maybe that's part of it, where there was a lot of parents in every classroom that I was in, so it was nice to see so much community participation in that, because it is a great opportunity to get into the school, see the school, kind of meet the teachers, so that was pretty exciting. And I guess that's kind of it for today, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tufel. Dr. Braverman?
I just wanted to say thank you to all the board members and the staff for flowers and cards that you sent me while I was in the hospital, it means a lot. Helps the speedy recovery, hopefully I'm hanging in. So thank you very much.
It's great to see you, welcome back. I, I don't really have anything to say, except that I attended NHS Open House also, I love it, thinking, how am I going to juggle two schedules next year when I have two there? But, um, yeah, it's, it's a great night. So there's no, nothing else, somebody move to adjourn, please? Buddy? Mr. Schulman? Second. All favor! Meeting adjourned at 7:59. Thank you.